Welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, September 22nd, 2015. We're now called to order at 7:00. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast by Local Access Programming. Is there anyone in the audience that's recording tonight's meeting? No? Okay. There being none, please rise and join us in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First item, Park Chugg Acres Daycare Center requesting minor modification of site plan approval at 141 Auburn Street.
All right. The Chair, the applicant is not prepared to be here right now. If you'd like, I can wait till later to discuss this, but they brought this to my attention and it seems...
Do you expect them in?
I did, yes. For them to come in just to be present, but this seems like a pretty short order item. We can wait just to give them the opportunity to get in.
Why don't we move it down? And Welcome Homes has been continued?
Yes, we received continuous application.
Okay.
Mr. Bissarci.
So, just need a vote to continue.
Have they made any progress?
They are exploring options. So, it appears they would like to keep this open in case they still would like to pursue this avenue.
Is that something about peer review?
Yes. We received the price of peer review and he hadn't received payment yet, so the applicant's trying to decide what to do with the project.
Okay. So, any motion to continue the hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
What date?
October 6th.
What time? 7:00?
October 6th at 7:00? 7:05. All right. Okay. It's been leaded and seconded. Any further discussion?
Make a motion, please.
Make a motion to continue the hearing for Welcome Homes.
Oh, yeah, okay.
October 6th at 7:00 PM.
It's up for sale.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So, do we have to wait now until 7:05, correct?
Yes, for two minutes.
Yeah, let's do minutes, guys. Would you like to make a motion? To accept the minutes?
Make a motion to accept the minutes as they are.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Ian, you want to do the signatures?
Sure, I'll do the signature. All right. Let's do this one first. This is the road layout plan for Paul River Road. At our meeting of September 22nd, we recommend that this went to Board of Selectmen for endorsement.
September?
I'm sorry, September 8th. We recommended their endorsement and they signed and it's our procedure next to start.
Okay. I won't be signing because I wasn't here.
Actually, you may have, this may have been a later thing.
Yeah, do that because was that, I recall that one.
What's the date that the Board of Selectmen goes out?
9/14. I put today's date.
I guess not, must've been.
Yeah.
They did it on the full term, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And then the 688 South Bridge, that's the Wendy's or, it'll be discussions around that, so we'll have that on.
It worked.
Put your pad yours. There's yours. Couple of late's finally, huh? You ready? Ready?
Thank you.
Someone will steal it.
Ian, what's the time?
It blew my mind. Is that in your company?
Yeah.
It's fine after.
Wish I knew.
All set? Massed Family LLC of Diamond Auto Group requesting a site plan modification under Section 9.4.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the demolition of a structure, site regrading, utility upgrade, and reconfiguration of a parking lot on property located at 51 Faith Avenue, Auburn, Mass. Assessors map 61, Lot 11.
Just for public record, Chairman, Ms. Donohue was absent at the opening of this meeting and has reviewed the minutes of the previous meeting and has signed authorization through the Mullen Rule, which I witnessed, so she'll be eligible to vote tonight.
Appreciate that. Beaming Man, Chair, members of the Planning Board, for the record, Tim Williams and Alan Major, associates here representing the Massed Family LLC on the personal 51 Faith Ave. And as we presented last time, the scope of work is essentially eliminating the, taking down the existing, what was it, truck showroom building, restriping the parking lot, adding handicap parking to the site, doing some miscellaneous site improvements, including water and sewer connections. The water connection has been done already previously, prior to what's coming before the Board, and the sewer work is pending right now to connect the, the existing site is on a septic system and we're going to take it off and put it into municipal sewer. So, as I previously noted, that we're required to have 71 parking spaces and the proposed project, based on, again, retail use, was calculated prior in the 2008 and then again in the 2010, of site plan modification. We use retail as a way to evaluate the proposed parking. We're required to have 71 spaces and we show 71 spaces, but we also have additional parking on the site, which, again, it's a car dealership, so they propose to use 53 spaces above and beyond the 71 that are out there today. So, the only minor change that we've done to the plans, the site was going through the Conservation Commission process concurrently with the Planning Board, and so we added some landscape islands to the end caps of this drive aisle right through here, per the request of the Conservation Commission. At the last Planning Board meeting, the project was sent out for peer review. We subsequently received a peer review memo back from Graves Engineering and quickly spun around a response memo along with updated plans. And essentially what they asked us to do was to add, we had compact spaces located within the center drive aisle, was to add signage for those compact spaces, which we have included in the plan set, as well as answering a few other questions that they had. One of them being the Mass DOT issue, as you can see, the property line is in red, the existing paved surfaces is outside the property line. We looked high and low for, there was a comment that a memo might have been generated from the DOT allowing us to keep this pavement on the site. We looked high and low for that memo and couldn't find it.
Same here.
So, whatever the flavor of the Board is, we could reach out to Mass DOT and ask them what their opinion is on this pavement, but we'd hate to see that hold up, the approval process on this project. The building's been constructed, it's just waiting for a temporary occupancy permit so they can be in business out here on the site. So, there's a sense of urgency to move this project along. So, if it's okay with the Board, we can work through the Planning Department and get some kind of letter from the DOT. Whether they ask us to remove it, we'll remove it as part of this project. Whether they say it can stay in place, we will leave it. The point of the matter is, is we are parking and striping the parcel outside that paved surface.
Within your property.
Right, within your property lines. You're not out on the state property also.
That's correct. That's correct. Another comment that we heard was they were concerned about how trucks would deliver cars to the site, and the site is going to function as it does today, there will be no car delivery to the site. It'll be delivered somewhere else and driven down here for display within the 53 spaces and again, within the building itself. Another comment was stormwater management. The peer reviewer questioned whether the site needed stormwater management. The site, again, was approved in 2008, full long site plan for the project, stormwater management was incorporated into the site at that time. We're not adding any impervious surface, in fact, we're eliminating some, although minute on the site, but the project went through the Conservation Commission process and they didn't feel that in stormwater management. Above and beyond what's already been implemented was required. There were some comments on erosion control barriers, which we've updated in the plan set, those are currently out on the site now. We just amended the plans to reflect, again, some of the ConCom's desires. There was an underground propane tank in this location, so what we've done is that's going to be removed as part of the demo of the truck showroom. We've called out on the plans as well to remove that underground propane tank per the Town of Auburn requirements. And again, they had questions on the septic system, but what we're doing is, we are connecting a pump station from this building to pump it up to the municipal system. Once that is in place and operational, in working with the Board of Health in town, we're going to have, we're going to eliminate this septic system per Title V standards. So, it'll be filled in and it'll be abandoned per DEP requirements. And the last comment that they had was essentially the water connection to make sure that it was fully coordinated with the Auburn Water District, which it was. And again, that's been in for at least six months now, that water line connection. So, it appears we've addressed all of the comments from the peer reviewer, outside of finding the memo that allows us to keep this pavement in place, but again, we're striping outside of it and then we'll just work with the DOT to see what their desires are. They may want us to leave it in place and just not occupy it, because again, it isn't in the state right of way and there are some steep slopes on this side, but either way, we'll continue to work with the DOT to see what they have to say about what they'd like to do with that pavement that's on their property.
Did they give any comments for item number two?
Yes, I just provided that to the meeting today.
Okay, so, comment two said, "My initial comment pertained to whether or not a 10-foot strip of onsite asphalt needs to be removed along the property line in order to create a buffer. If the asphalt's to be removed, defer to the Board if plantings would be required within the buffer. The design engineer's response was in reference to the asphalt located off of the 51 Faith Avenue site." So, do we need to create that buffer?
It's, I think it's...
It's a paved place.
Right.
If they take the asphalt out of that paved place, then they have to put something in there as a buffer.
Some plantings.
Right, but then again, the applicant can't exactly just make changes to state property given there and its current condition. So, I think it's beneficial for the Board to hear that the applicant's going to be reaching out to DOT to...
So, you'll get us something from the DOT that says what they want you to do?
Exactly.
And what was the reason for the Conservation wanting those islands at the end of those two?
Well, again, that's a good question. I think it was just they wanted, as part of the project, to create some additional pervious surfaces.
How big are they, like, the triangles?
They're relatively small. I would say that's probably 100 square feet total combined in all of them, if that. But they, you know, again, the Conservation Commission, we are, this is a wetland area that's been delineated in the field, and you can see there's the 25-foot, 50, and 100-foot wetland buffer line. So, we are working within those buffers, so the Conservation Commission does have jurisdiction in.
I'm just curious, because they impair plowing and the ability to keep it clean, and anything in them dies because of the salt and sand.
Well, I don't know if you've been out at the site, Massed Family does a really nice job keeping up the site. Obviously, as you drive up and down Route 20, there's many numbers of car dealerships and all their sites are immaculate, and I have no doubts that this one will be the same, as it is not. Beautiful site.
I don't know what it was.
Jonathan?
Just a couple minor questions. Did the new plan with the islands come in before or after the peer review? Does that impact things in any way?
We received that after the peer review.
Yeah, but that shouldn't impact any of the comments that we addressed. When you found that?
No, I did, to echo what the applicant said through the Chair, this was to show a reduction in impervious surfaces to the Conservation Commission.
Okay. Does the town have an opinion on the DOT letter and how to handle that?
Through the Chair, I'd almost, I'd almost recommend that if any changes to that area come from their communication with Mass DOT, that minor modifications submitted to the Board at a future date. But if the Mass DOT says, "Leave it as is," or even if they own the park there, I think that'd be on the applicant to decide if they'd like to restructure their lot to use it. But again, would come back to us as a minor modification.
Okay. Would that be a condition?
Yeah, I think so. I think that'd be sufficient.
Ryan?
I think it's fine. As I straightened out with DOT about that paved area that's outside your property line, do whatever DOT wants. They want it left, if they want it redone.
Efficientest.
Do it. Don't let it get in the building.
I do have one question for the applicant.
Sure.
I forget where I heard this, maybe it was in the peer review or maybe it wasn't. I apologize. Regarding the erosion control measures, I remember them saying that they'd like to see those extended across the hill toward the down gradient curve.
Yeah, actually, what we showed on the plans was, at the time, the hay bales were installed along this edge, which was in the buffer. Subsequently, erosion control measures have been added along this edge as well. So, we've called those on the plans, just to maintain the existing hay bales as they are shown, or as they exist out on the site today.
And they actually extend farther than what's shown on the plan now?
Yeah, again, the ConCom's, the applicant's working with the Conservation Commission on the extents of the erosion control measures.
Okay.
Why don't you give them a copy just so we can see as we go forward?
Oh, of course. When I close the hearing today, they're going to decide on conditions.
You were hoping to close it. Again, it's contingent us getting a TCO through the Building Department to actually occupy the building. So, it's been quite a financial hardship on the dealership that they're not able to use this facility that they constructed, so.
So, all entities in motion to close the hearing?
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And entertain motion to...
Make a motion to approve the conditions.
And the condition, Paul?
Well, Jonathan, can you confirm?
We want to do...
I'll say beside the paved area.
Well, 1 through 6.
Let's say 1 through...
4. 1 through 4.
4.
Do you want to know as well? Especially if there might be a change?
Yeah. 1 through 6.
Oh, 6 is for the...
No, I'm sorry, 1 through 5. And also...
And then, what I suggested before, Paul, was a condition that the applicant return to the Board for a minor modification if DOT, if there was a change in the DOT condition.
Right, yeah.
Moving the pavement off the DOT property. And clean that up.
Absolutely.
You know what I mean.
Yeah.
So, Paul make a motion.
I'll make a second.
Okay, most of me in second.
Any further discussion?
I have a question, Chair.
Sure.
Just for the applicant, any issues with the conditions you've heard?
I don't believe so.
I don't know.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. I'll have a session drafted this week and the Board will sign it at their next meeting, but regardless of the site plan approvals.
I appreciate that.
It's great.
Thank you very much.
See us tomorrow night.
Thank you.
Come on, Paul.
Yes. Yes.
They just like playing with that machine that makes it...
Well, we made five years to eliminate.
Laminate?
Re-laminate. I made minor edits, it's just grammatical things, and then we got them laminated on a regular piece of paper and you guys gave me a hard time, so I got the card stock back and laminated it for you, so. And I couldn't find the blue paper until today, so this is...
Staples is just down the street. You've got an assistant. Buy a leave of blue paper.
That's great.
The next is applicant for the Town of Auburn, an amendment of the Auburn zoning bylaw, Section 9, administration to include a planning board section as allowed in Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5. I need a motion to open the hearing, please.
Make that motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Would you like to take the lead now?
Thank you. Just for the record, the public at home, this is originally came from the Planning Board to introduce alternate members to the Board. As part of creating this amendment to the bylaw, we actually had to create an entire section for the Planning Board, because there wasn't one in our bylaw. So, I mean, it wasn't as easy as just adding the alternate member language. So, this was reviewed by Town Council and approved, and originally, we had relocated Section 9.2 and put it at the end of the bylaw, but after speaking with the Town Clerk and the Attorney General was obviously okay with us giving a Section 9.0, so we didn't have to shift anything else around the bylaw. So, other than that, this is, this language was approved by Council and details all of the powers and abilities and responsibilities of the Planning Board in addition to having one alternate member.
Paul, did you have any comments on that?
No, I think that's great. We've been trying to have alternate members for a while.
Ronnie? Jonathan?
Just a question, would the alternate member attend all meetings or will we hope there be an absence?
And when would he, when would he impose? When would he perform?
I think they would call on as needed when needed quorum, or if he needed a vote for special permit and someone was absent consecutive times and they couldn't enact a vulnerable. Like the Zoning Board of Appeals, the alternate member does attend meetings regularly, because there's, you typically don't know when someone's not going to show up for an application, so they do attend. And their feedback, so, obviously appreciated too, when they're able to contribute to the meetings, just sometimes won't be able to vote unless needed.
That was my next question.
Yeah, I was going to say, yeah.
No, that looks good.
Motion to approve?
I'll see public comments. Yes, motion to close and I'm on.
Motion to close?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And then a motion to accept the amendment of the Auburn zoning bylaw administration to include the planning board section.
Make the motion to accept.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You can make a motion, Jonathan.
I made it. Read it on the second. You left me hanging.
Just for language, Erica's, just be more of a motion to recommend favorably to the Board of Selectmen to put this on top of your...
Okay.
So...
Do we need to remember?
They already voted. It's the same thing. It's just how we word it, that's all.
Because it's not accepted until town meeting.
Correct.
On October 27th?
Yep.
Okay. Did you want to talk about the next couple items or...
Sure. Thank you. So, Brenmore State's construction budget update, last meeting, we asked the Town Engineer to come and examine the, the letter of credit for the work, for the roadway work, and make sure it's still up to date. Unfortunately, the Town Engineer is on vacation this week, but I did find the information that he'll be able to work here and hopefully provide a report for next meeting.
Okay. Any questions for Matt on that? No? Okay. The video conference selectmen hearing, September 28th. Did you all have an opportunity to read the UNO participation policy? Are there any comments?
No. It's restricted, a lot more restrictive than I would want it, but it's pretty good.
How so, Paul?
Well, you're restricted to how many meetings that you can, I mean remotely, what is it, two? Three?
No more than five times per term, if the term is three years or more.
Yeah.
So, someone watching remotely can only do it five times in three years.
Three years.
Or five times in five years, if that was the...
And no more than twice per fiscal year. Yep. But there is also an option, if extraordinary circumstances warrant, an extension longer than two times in a fiscal year, the Board of Selectmen must vote to grant an extension. So, there is an opportunity there.
Well, the thing is, get it in with what you've got and you can always modify it at a later date. It's like the camel in the tent.
Jonathan?
Why the stipulation about the opening of the public hearing? No member shall be allowed to remotely participate for the opening of any public hearing?
Go ahead.
Up through the Chair, this was, when the Town Manager put this together, she reviewed a lot of other policies in towns, and that wasn't really it, so it's consistent with many other town procedures.
So, they have to be for the initial discussion of the, when the hearing is initially opened in order to participate?
For a couple of reasons, as in, you receive a majority of the information for each application at the first meeting, and if you're participating remotely, you actually can't tell if you received that information. That was one of the reasons, but it was very consistent with some of the other towns.
And I want you to know what the public is commenting on it, till first time.
And we're set up here to be able to do the...
We did it.
This room is the only one.
Well, we did it when we were, when we were looking for a new superintendent back a few times. We actually did a remote conference in here and interviewed people that were out of state, so it is set up.
Any other comments on the, more questions or clarification?
For the reasons for doing it, personal illness, disability, emergency, military service, or significant geographic distance. So, for instance, Jim goes to Florida for a period of time, he qualifies under significant geographic distance. If you're just in Boston, I mean, what's kind of the idea there?
The town, or a town can put a miles cap on that.
Really?
Yes. According to CMR 2910, I mean, this is one of the things that is allowed by the state. The town can, can put an alternative restriction on that to make sure you are a certain distance, but you can't eliminate geographic distance completely. It has to be something you're allowed to do, but you can't put a restriction on it to say you have to be so far away.
Can't do it from the else.
So, but they have that pretty broad.
Exactly. So, the town can put a mile number.
I don't see anybody, you know, abusing that.
And again, you don't have to participate remotely if you're absent. It's not required. If you're absent and you want to be absent, you can be absent. So, this is...
And especially if we're going to get an alternate member.
Correct. I think the alternate member kind of against it.
Right.
But...
Well, but we didn't have this, so we didn't have an alternate member, so we're probably going to get both now, which is even better.
So, what's the, what's the process going forward for this?
So, I put this in front of us just because the Board of Selectmen is going to be reviewing this policy for the first time by 28th, and this gives us a chance to provide any comments on the draft in advance. So, that's something we were asked to do by the Board or the Town Manager, just that was a good opportunity for us to provide comments on the draft in advance, so the Selectmen could see it. They will have to vote to adopt the policy. This would go in effect for all Town Boards, not just the Planning Board. They can't restrict it to just one Board, but any Board will have the ability to, you just say, opt out of the practice at the beginning, once it's accepted, if they don't want to use it.
So, each Board will vote themselves if they're going to use this or not?
Yes, once, if it's adopted by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
So, then we get another chance to vote, whether or not we...
Yeah. It'll be implemented automatically for us unless we opt out, so we don't have to vote yes. And if the Board of Selectmen chooses to endorse it.
So, we have opportunity until the 28th to provide comments?
If I may, Madam Chair, one of the items on here. Obviously, the Mullen Rule still comes into play here if you're absent, of course, but you wouldn't... comes into play here if you're, if you're absent, of course, but you wouldn't have to use it if you were participating remotely. And in an instance where you did miss a meeting and then you were getting, you may miss your second, lose your ability to vote, you may want to participate remotely to still be able to.
Make sure that you can vote, yeah.
Right, exactly. So I think that, that's a good reason for us, for, for members to only use this. One of the items on here that was, that's not in the Master in Law is something I agree with and I just wanted to bring it to the forefront is that for the opening of a meeting for remote participation, the chairman, whoever was chairing the meeting at the time cannot be absent. So like if you're, if you are absent, Madam Chair, and you can't attend, John would have to take over chairmanship if he's present or, or.
And she could still participate remotely.
Right, because the person organizing the meeting should be here instead of running in front of the table.
Just to clarify, from that hearing forward, John will chair that hearing even if Wendy's present?
Correct.
Yes.
The rest of the meeting?
This will be hearing.
Keep going.
It went well, so I think that continued.
Oh, any continuances?
Right, yep. Next steps.
Sure. So for us, if we'd like to make any recommendation to the Board via motion tonight, and I could put a letter together, that could work, or if you'd like to send them individually, the Board of Selectmen, you'd have more time to review this. We need it by Thursday. Or you send it to me, I can put a letter together.
Do you think, was it your, did you want to request that there's a minimum max on geographic, on the amount of geographic distance or do you need it broad?
Broad is good.
Okay.
Are there any, I apologize, Madam Chair, are there any major concerns about this?
I thought it was pretty well done.
Yeah, I thought the town manager did a great job. They should do a considerable amount of homework about this together.
Do you need a motion to close?
If, if the Board doesn't recommend any changes or any modifications, we don't have to vote. It's just a discuss this opportunity or give it in advance. If you'd like to put something together, say that the Board has no issues with the proposal, you can vote. Then I put that memo together.
I have no issues. Put that in.
I could also just relay that verbally at the meeting too.
There you go. Everybody see that, please?
Thank you.
All right, so we're at that one. No further comments on that?
Okay.
The Village District overlay maps.
So through the chair, we actually brought this up last meeting, we just didn't actually choose one. I distracted the Board unfortunately and we forgot to come back to it, so I apologize, but we did have two maps and we were hoping to choose one for CMR PC to focus their efforts on the draft overlay district bylaws.
Jonathan?
So, I thought we did talk about, but I'm in favor of two, the mortgage fence again.
And that's identical to the local business?
Almost.
Almost identical?
Yeah, it omits the mall and it omits the Southbridge Street Court neighborhood and the, what is it, is it Bezen Court? I forget what that street is, next to Young Shing. It omits the neighborhood off the back of that.
I can't hold it.
Thank you. Okay, so that, it omits the neighborhood in the back there too. So the overlay would only apply to the commercial properties in the real line from the Mass Pike Overpass near the Ron Bishard's Acquiescence dealership all the way to, it's like Jersey's Plumbing near the railroad after Jury Square.
So you'd like to see that expanded rather than trying to create that cultural downtown center or what are your thoughts on that, Jonathan?
I'd be fine with including the mall in it as well, I guess. I just look at that whole corridor, has kind of the same character and is all going to play into having the same character. So I think it would make sense to have it all be consistent and have similar type of design and limitations throughout the entire area. I really would be fine with including the mall in that as well in case there was ever any change in some of that piece, but I think that's, you know, I'm fine with that as well.
If I may, Madam Chair.
Sure.
Through the chair, the regional mall actually has its own overlay district already, which is regulated for the planning.
Overlay and overlay?
Yeah, I didn't. It has similar traits to an overlay district in this capacity, just one of like the mixed use restrictions or signage restrictions as it does, but given the regional mall overlay district now gives all the ability to the Planning Board to regulate this goes forward as would the dual district.
Sounds clean.
If it's okay with the Board, I would require a motion to accept one of these two overlay maps.
Have the businesses in these areas been notified what we're doing?
This isn't, we're not putting together a policy just yet. We're shaping a bylaw for vote at a future time wherein we would hold a public hearing and allow public comment for all the properties in this district.
We could have had that done for nothing. We could have had a new high school for nothing.
You have any other comments, Paul?
We should have had it done for nothing. We should have had a high school done for nothing.
Ronnie? Jonathan?
Make a motion to advance alternate two.
You have a second on that?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I'm going to abstain. I want, I don't want to make a decision to have to talk to some of the businesses in here. I had a lot of resistance when I was taking businesses out of there.
So, I'm sorry, Paul. Ronnie? The draft bylaw for the marijuana dispensary?
Yes, Madam Chair, we discussed before the meeting, but I apologize to the Board. I've been working on the, the moratorium and have put a lot of focus into the bylaw right now just because they're trying to get the moratorium on for, on for town meetings. So we did put that draft together. I put the correspondence in our, in our packet this evening and we should have this on our next agenda for October 6th. Select Board voted to recommend the moratorium be reviewed by the Planning Board at their last meeting on the 14th. So we reviewed it on the 6th, provide recommendation that night, they can get on for town meeting. So I've been working on that as.
And it has to be passed by the legislature?
Correct. Yep. So I apologize.
So the draft bylaw for the actual dispensary has been kind of pushed to the back until the moratorium is, and then we're going to take our time with that, a meeting with Chief Silkis and have had a conversation with Drew Jacobson as well, who does too, so just getting a feel for the feeling of the local head of the town, so.
Also for me, and then Paul came by the office last week and dropped off a lot of good literature for us to consider.
Not all of it.
Yeah, and he has more. For us to have for our review purposes once we're a little farther along with the, with the bylaw itself, so I plan on providing that to the members as well.
This whole thing?
Well, if you have more, by all means.
It is.
I'll run copies, so.
Oh, it is.
Yeah, no, it's good. Any information is better, so it's, it's all useful for us to, to have in front of us before we meet this.
Marijuana is illegal in the United States.
Okay, so moving on.
So you're going to condone an illegal act?
Well, the way I was looking at it was if we don't have, we can't vote to deny it or allow it if we don't have bylaws.
Well, if you vote for it, you're voting for an illegal act.
Vote for bylaw, we're only voting for authority.
I mean, if you vote to put one in, you're voting for an illegal act. Both under US law, under state law, and under patent law.
But I, just through the chair, just to clarify, I mean, if we don't have a bylaw, we can't vote to deny it. So if we, we need a bylaw in order to give ourselves the authority to deny it, otherwise they'll just go in and we won't have any ability.
Right, we have no way to stop it.
There you do. Take them to court. It's illegal.
Federally.
Federal law supersedes state law. I got all the case law right here.
Okay.
That's what Gonzales wishes to write, should go all the way through everything.
Okay, moving on. The town manager, would be 688 Southbridge Street, did you guys?
Both.
Yeah, we were.
Opponents, so.
Well, we also want to make note that there was a letter received from some of Butters'.
Yep, they were here at the meeting. We already addressed the cemetery, I don't know if we have to address this one here.
Right, and this did come in after, after we had our last meeting and it came in after the vote, but I just, just to be fair to the applicant, I wanted to make sure that they knew that the Planning Board did receive it, although it was Boston, Mississippi. And just to say publicly that this plan does show the outdoor seating area to be in the front of the building.
Yep, and the back.
And I couldn't tell from the letter or not, but I believe the.
They were having trouble with the back.
They may have anticipated that this was going in the rear of the building, so I just wanted to clarify that this will be in the front and they did take some mitigating measures to reduce trash flow, at least on, to the cemetery side of the building and just wanted to make sure that they knew.
Well, if there's anything we can incorporate into our decision or anything that will help relieve these people, I think we should, because they are right next to this.
Well, there must be a fence there because they say that they were destroying the fence.
Through the chair, I think if, if the Planning Board recommends that the building inspector takes a look at the fence and see if it's, needs repair, he could recommend that to be up against.
Yeah, so they're talking about broken fence due to people hanging on it, so I don't know what kind of fence they have.
Trash deliveries and pickup, that before 6:00 AM, we usually don't allow that. It's always been after 7:00 or 8:00 AM.
Right, and through the chair.
Which is the condition we impose on the site plan.
And through the chair, that they're delivering trash before 7:00 AM and it's of a certain decibel, they'd be violating the noise organization SDP anyways, so.
Yeah, but no, who's enforces it?
Yeah, right, and, and we could, we could at least send a letter on behalf of the Board of Selectmen.
I think we should try that. If they're looking for something additional, we should.
I agree.
Tie that condition of the trash pickup and deliveries to, to that condition or what they're, what they're looking for.
We have them picking up the trash in the cemetery as it is now every shift or, you know, during, at least once during the shift. So walk around the back of the building and pick up the trash, you know, don't just walk up the side, walk around the back too.
Yeah, through the chair, I believe I could fit a condition to that effects on here on the front page and not affect the second page where we can still sign tonight and I could have that.
Yeah, if you can do that.
I can't, but I don't want to say afterwards that we couldn't do it, because I mean, that's
my feeling.
Yeah, I agree with you on that, those two things.
I want to see the trash pickup after 6:00 AM and deliveries after 6:00 AM.
Yep. It'd have to be up to 7:00, right?
No, 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock.
Yeah, the DP is, is post 9:00 PM and the time between 9:00 PM and 7:00 AM is the ordinance for a certain decibel for operating machinery and such.
Jonathan?
So we, we can still do that even after?
We can, you sure?
Yes, we could, we can amend to add condition because we have a second decision.
You see it before we sign it?
Right, because we technically have 65 days to render this decision after the, the public hearing is closed.
So you'll type it and we'll, and they'll see it and then we sign only if we like what it says.
And the Board?
If it has that condition. And if we don't, it doesn't get approved.
The Board votes after the hearing is closed. The votes on approval or denial.
Okay, no, that's a good point. So we vote to amend the conditions to add decision.
So someone will make that motion?
I'll make the motion that we add the condition that the deliveries and trash pickup after 8:00 AM.
All right, and you're going to send someone to look at the back fence?
And that we.
Back to the, into departmental, like building.
Okay, all right.
And a continued cemetery trash pickup.
Yeah, because we did, we did require a trash pickup in the cemetery.
I apologize, I forgot to bring this to our attention. One of the conditions that we had initially asked for was for them to provide an updated plan that showed the landscape buffer that they were proposing, and they did provide that. So it is on an updated plan, so I did pull it from the conditions, because we don't need to bring it if they already have.
All right.
So they did provide additional water landscape screening in that area.
Yeah, we're going to put something along a cemetery.
That's right.
Okay, so that was put on the plan?
Yes.
All right. Okay.
All right.
Made the motion?
Ronnie's made a motion, we have a second. Okay, all those, and any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Paul?
What?
You in favor?
Yeah, I said yeah.
Okay.
All right, we can still sign this on your page and that will make the correction.
Those three, two of them anyways, Wendy's and the.
Applebee's.
Applebee's, huh? Yeah, I mean, they're not bad majors.
Just for the gentleman.
They look pretty decent up there, they usually keep it looking.
Yeah, they take nice care and, yeah.
Care, I never hear of any trouble there or problems.
They didn't let me have my lunch that day.
Here in those, here in those back.
I would buy one.
Discuss sending warranties. I like that McDonald's up the McDonald's.
Yeah, on 20, yeah.
Is, are they going to reopen?
No.
So we don't have to.
But you can't get in there. They got that thing down the middle, you can't cross it, so they have to go all the way down and come mess up to get in there. You only get access from one way.
Okay. And we're going to hold on a little bit. It's still closed. Matt, have you heard the McDonald's up by Taco Bell? Not going to be open?
Yeah, it's closed and I think they're trying to tear down the building now.
They're tearing it down, yeah, save one tax.
Where?
McDonald's.
Oh, the one up on Route 20? Wow, they're not going to reopen?
Nope.
Well, because of the one, you know, divided highway, it's real.
Can't get across.
Have to get in.
Yeah, there, I've only heard through some chatter about, about town, but there's no one that I'm aware of that has bought it and is building something new at this time.
That looks like it would be a nice lesson.
Okay, moving along.
All right, we did the minutes, we've signed.
Yes.
What?
The Paul's.
Yeah, to sign those and the next meeting is, oh yeah, we're going to come back to Packer Talk Gakers and nobody.
They didn't show up.
Came, so you want to show us with the modifications?
I will, because I really do think this is my air, but just pursuing, I did bring this in behind. So, just want to show the original plan first so we know what we're having here. Thanks, Paul.
Thanks.
So, this was approved by the Planning Board just this past. It's March. It's past May with a modification done in November and now here's a future modification.
And the other thing too, I thought they were going to leave a lot of that, those, they took it all down.
A lot of the screen?
Yeah, yeah.
So, and, and that's part of the thing I'm, I'm about to go over, so this is the rear of the building, there's an existing garage here and then they have proposed, sorry, there's a proposed six-foot fence right here, chain link fence, all right? So you'll see on this new plan, it comes back a little bit and I'll show you that.
Yeah, because they took out all that, all those trees.
With the base of the bank in with the.
Yeah, they took it all out.
Straight line across the garage where the fence is. And I'll show you the modification if there's something. That's the only thing that's chain link. I'll show you that.
But this was the approved plan, right?
Correct.
And all of those trees were taken down? Was that?
The, the original decision rendered that the existing trees were sufficient buffer on that. Let's see.
Let's see.
Here is the revised, let me pull that page back, the single. And here's the revised, which goes 18 feet deeper, the proposed fence and the landscape buffer.
So the fence was like six feet, now it's going to be back in here.
Right, it'll be 18 feet farther back.
But this banken is still, they're still on the flat.
Yes, it's still, still wood.
Still flat and then it has a distance and then it goes up, and it goes up to the back of the houses on East Fifth Road.
That's right.
It's quite a bit of...
But they took, all those trees were taken out completely. So this old wooded buffer is gone from the houses up above.
Yeah, it may be beneficial for us to look at that, the way that Eric and I measured it and according to our landscape bylaw, depending on how we declare this, if it's an institutional use or a business use, the largest amount of screening required between the two of those was 25 feet and this appears to be 25 feet.
Okay.
Well, this back line is, this is the back property line of those houses.
Yes.
But the houses are probably much further up and I think, as I remember, most of it's wooded.
Can we look at it on the...
Could, but we wouldn't, if they have removed trees, we wouldn't be able to see.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, the original decision, whether the board determined the significant amount of landscaping to the south and watched the site, meets the intent of the buffer requirements.
Okay.
Subjective because it's a square wood line.
Yeah, I was just really shocked to see all that gone.
After they took the trees, how much buffer is there?
25 feet appears according to the plan, but if it's different out there.
Yeah, you measured it on that one, John, we'll go here.
What it's trying to do is, if you look at the 18 feet additional here, goes right up to the tree line, all I was basically trying to do was just evaluate how far this distance is up to where the new proposed tree line is.
It's completely different.
You see where it changes right here.
You see where it changes.
Yeah, so it's...
Way back.
I mean, if they're meeting the minimum standard, I don't profit anywhere, so they're just curious.
Well, yeah. I was just really surprised when I saw that.
I was actually surprised when you...
What was the power business going to change?
To provide a little...
Play yard.
That's right.
What?
Increase that play yard in the back.
Well, in one way you protect it, like you said, with all the kids there, you'd not want to have much more woods than you really needed.
Right, but in, you would like some...
You need some sound buffer.
...to get the sound down from a bunch of screaming kids out of the playground.
The buff, but that goes up a banken afterwards, at the end, right in back of that garage.
It does rise from...
It's a considerable lift.
Yep.
So the trees are going to be up higher and they'll...
Hopefully, yeah.
So I think it'll do a pretty nice job.
So what do you, what do you need?
The board would like to motion to accept the minor revision or if we would like to table this so the applicant can attend, it's up to the board. I thought this was, it met requirements, it seemed quite minor.
You've got the 25 feet.
We did. So I suppose...
Why don't you say the motion?
I'll make the motion to consider it a safe minor, safe. Say any motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we need a motion to accept it as well? You determine that it is minor and then accept the, or is it just one?
No, we're petition with that. Because I've done open hearing.
Is that it? Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.